Welcome, everyone, to the July 22 Eugene City Council meeting. First item up is the executive session for our evaluation of our city managers. So Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session to review and evaluate the performance of employee. The executive session is held through O R S 192.6602I. Representatives of the news media and designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of executive session, we will return to open discussion and welcome the audience into the room. So do we need to, are we okay? Are we waiting?
That says we're good.
Yes, we're good. Okay. Now, we're back in our regular work session, the city manager's annual performance review, and we'll start over again.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Alana Holmes, Human Resources Director here at the city of Eugene. With me today is Carrie Beraldo, who has worked with you to create the packets and allow you to have the review that you've had, you'll have today. So basically, this is your opportunity to discuss your performance evaluation with city manager Ruiz. Again, he's been with us now, when you look back to April 14, 2008, so it's a little over seven years now, and I'll turn it over to you for your conversation.
Great. Do it similarly what we did before, go around and give everybody a chance, and I'll start this way this time. But I'm going to go first and just start out and end with the same thing that I, I think you do an excellent job, city manager, and I appreciate your openness with me and your willingness to work together in so many ways. I very much appreciate it. Here are my observations. I appreciate the caution that you have as our economy picks up and the desire to do things differently as opposed to just putting it back the way it was. But I, and I think you know this, I want to register concern about staffing levels and the implications on workload. I think you already have spoken about that. And the inevitability on the, inevitably on the ability to produce the quality work we all desire. And I think, and sometimes that actually gets reflected in people being spread so thin, you don't, you can't get maybe as deep into some things as you'd like to sometimes because of the not having enough bandwidth, so to speak. So I wanted to talk about concern for that because I think our best outcome is to being able to produce high-quality work we want and to meet the ambitious goals we set, and we set a lot of them. I count library and park service as part of these goals, and I think your management of the city's budget has been tops, respecting our staff, protecting jobs, and making tough cuts and continuing to provide services. And I think that wasn't easy. We've talked about it a number of times, but I, I still think it was a very high bar. I commend you and your staff for the can-do attitude we now embrace. I believe that to be important in having confidence in ourselves and in others, and setting the bar high is the right thing to do for this city and the people who live here. I really commend you for the cultivation of trust. The work is never done, especially given that many feel they cannot trust if they do not agree. I advise continuing to look outward to those who do not yet trust, who do not yet feel included. Some of this is about how the organization communicates. While vast improvements have been and continue to be made, we need to evaluate how accessible all our information is and how timely it is. I don't think that's a new thing coming out of my mouth either. I strongly believe continuing progress has been made in all the goals set. I am so heartened and pleased with our work on regional prosperity, the new rain center downtown, and the legislative support for it in this recent session. It's my hope that we'll truly turn the corner in building a healthier economy for the people who live here. This is turn, this in turn will grow our tax base for service provision. So in terms of emergency operations, a lot of work has been done, but I think the recent tremor reminds us of the responsibility we have for the safety of this community, and council could benefit from a closer look at this, and I've talked to you about that too, but I, everywhere I go, I hear people wanting some more information. In terms of the police, E P D is making a lot of progress. I hope you will focus ensuring the safest response possible for mental health crisis incidents with an increasing capacity to avoid loss of life. In terms of building one of the best police forces in the country, I hope we are looking at how to keep and mentor the best officers here in Eugene, giving them opportunity to learn in advance. And I think that's a really important thing in every department. You're trying to keep the people that you think are the most skilled and help them build those skills, and I certainly feel that with our, with E P D as well. I very much appreciate our manager and staff for their commitment to reducing homelessness with Operation 365 and others. We still have to work with partners to house those who have been long without homes and are in need of social services and rehab services. We have to hit our 365, and it's important for this to be seen not only as a social service issue, but as a livability issue for everyone in this city. We will all be safer, and cost reductions will occur if we succeed in housing the unhoused in this community. In closing, I think the work of this year has been excellent, and your leadership has been excellent, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I agree with the mayor. I think your work and professionalism and very smart thinking and leadership with staff has served our community very well in this last year, and it's been a real privilege to work with you in this capacity. So, and I could address a lot of the same specific things the mayor addressed, but I actually agree with many of the things she raised in terms of some of the particulars. And I'll just share what I wrote in my evaluation, and I, and I kept it pretty brief because I think we've been evaluating now for a couple of years, and so far, nothing has changed in terms of my appreciation and satisfaction with your work. So, you know, John, you continue to build on your past success in many ways. You delivered a no-cut budget that provided our community with one of the first drama-free budget approval processes we've had in a long time. You've strengthened the positive relationships that you've fostered with the mayor and this council and many community stakeholders, and most importantly, you continue to inform, to listen to, and collaborate with the council in a way that is respectful and responsive while still being clear about your role and authority as city manager. And I think many folks in the public don't necessarily appreciate the nuances of that dynamic of having eight bosses that you're accountable to and how you also then have authorities under the law that we don't have and where those lines are. And I think you manage those very, very well and make our job easy in that respect. So I'm very pleased with your work, and I know there's definitely room for improvement. And as you pointed out, the past cuts to our budget have stressed our organization, and nonetheless, the, the work that comes out of our staff is in most, almost all ways so impressive and professional and on point that I'm continually impressed by that, knowing the workload that folks are under and the many things they're asked to do for us. So I'm looking forward to being able to help reduce that stress by having future sustainable budgets under your leadership. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, I think you're doing a great job as well. I, I hope you stay here a long time. You're a young man, relatively speaking, and I, so I hope you retire here, which means you'll be here a very long time. I, I think you're really good for Eugene. You've successfully navigated some very difficult things for us and with us that are very complex and organizationally challenging, specifically the budget and the drama-free budget. I like that. And Envision Eugene are two particularly complex things that I think have done really well. I think when you have the financial house in order, it makes things a lot easier every place else, and, and I think you've done a great job in that regard. Good job on the new city hall process. I think we, that was a difficult one, especially recycling, we're using 95% of the building. Excellent job of shepherding us through downtown development that we've had a renaissance in downtown. Nice job in negotiating the Amazon Headwaters deal. Great job on Operation 365 and the homelessness issue. I think we made, we made great strides in both those areas over the year, and I think you have a really good relationship with the staff and the execs, and you show real leadership without drama, which I very much appreciate. And especially instilling that budget discipline about no one-time money for ongoing services, I think is the mantra that now, you know, might be your legacy, and you're appropriately conservative there. And having said all that and putting, heaping praise on you, I know it takes a team to be able to do that, and the staff has just done a great job. They're very competent, very professional, and my hat's off to them as well. On this, on the areas I think need to still be worked on, I think the police department community relationships are better, but they're still strained, and I think that needs constant attention and your leadership. I think the union labor relationship is better, but still could use constant attention. I think council feels, I feel like we're a little disconnected from the economic development discussion, but I think we're moving towards getting more involved in that as a policy level. I'm a little disappointed we still haven't seen Triple Bottom actually integrated into the work review on a regular basis and in our A I Ss so that we see the economic, the environmental, and the equity aspects of major decisions. It doesn't have to be in every single A I S, but for those, I'd like to see it integrated into what we do. It's, it's been around long enough, we use it enough, but I'd like to see it incorporated. And then I'd also like to see us have the new city hall be a model of sustainability, so we're walking our talk, and that'd be a net zero building if possible can, and I ask for that information. Hopefully, that'll be forthcoming soon about what incremental costs would be to be able to do that. And then just finally, after Saturday's performance, I think you need to work on your cuckoo and...
Yes. Very much so.
That's a straight line that demands a response, but I'm going to pass on that just for now. It's really interesting to me, seven years, wow. When I reflect back on that, and first of all, actually, I'm going to step back and say, I agree with the mayor and Claire and some of what Alan said here in parts where we mentioned appropriate staffing levels for appropriate service levels in as, as much as in specific areas you're aware of, some needed attention, and I in need of further information. I also mentioned the needs around information flow that I hope we'll see. Those are areas, I think, where there's potential for growth, but what's interesting is that there are so few potential areas for growth and that one has to look so with a microscope in order to find one. If you look back at seven years, I'd been on council for a year and a half. Open hostility at this table was not uncommon at that time. There were huge pits in our downtown, which seemed like a desert at the time. Our council didn't work anywhere near as well together. The staff, we were facing massive potential budget problems. We were facing all manner of things seven years ago. You stood at the foot of a really, really tall mountain when you started, and I know just in how things used to operate, we were at the time encouraged not to make direct contact with staff too often, but to work through the manager. And I think maybe we forget sometimes that the city that all of us worked to help govern is a much different place today than it was seven years ago. And a lot of that is based on the culture of our city government. Now, I know we share a, an appreciation for innovation. When you first started, I remember talking, having a great conversation about this, and he gave me a book called Innovation Nation. I really appreciate it. But you've put that into practice in a way where you've remade the culture of our city government in seven years, and you continue to do that today. And it's one of the reasons I agree with Alan, that I hope you retire here. I really do. You blend the appropriate amounts of leadership strength with the organization to see the things done that need to be done with the staff, but at the same time, not being conflict averse, but being able to deal with conflicts in our community in a way where they're smoothly transitioned into appropriate action that moves us forward. So I think you're the right guy for this job, and you continue to be the right guy for this job better than I've seen it done. There are, as I mentioned, a couple of rooms, a couple opportunities for some, some things to get better, but they're very small when you look at the, at the whole picture. So thank you for your excellent work.
Chris?
I gave you an excellent rating, as I have for all of the previous performance evaluations because I think you do an excellent job. You are one of the best, if not the best, city managers I've ever seen in this community. I think you get the community and you do a fantastic job. I'm proud to have been a member of the council that hired you. It'll be one of the high points of my career is to be able to say, yes, I was one of the people that hired John Reese. I like a lot of, I, I don't want to read what I wrote here, but something I do want to focus in on was, I particularly like your philosophy of viewing the path to a solution as not being about either or, but about and. And to me, that's, that was a real aha fundamental, but it creates a challenge for you in that you have to figure out how to achieve that and. And what's difficult is you have to do it in a way that retains your accountability. And the best definition of accountability I've ever encountered was it's where you can take the responsibility because you have the resources and you have the authority. The council has granted you, for the most part, the authority, but what has been a challenge is the resources. Do you have the people and do you have the time to be able to be accountable for all the work that's given to you? And I'm sensitive to the fact that you have all of the regular work that the city needs to do, and then we regularly keep more things on you because the council as a, as a policy body is always interested in things. We will always be interested in things, and we'll always have a grocery list of things we're interested in, and we'll just keep adding on. And so your accountability becomes strained because your resources become stretched. And that gets to the, to the second idea, which is expectations. What does the community expect of you, and what do we as a council expect of you, and what do you expect of yourself? And where, everywhere I've worked, we had one boss. The expectation was when the boss wants something, you stop, drop, and roll. You give that boss what they want. And that's just the natural way it works. Well, you have eight bosses, and so what is the expectation when each one of these bosses wants you to do something? And I realize that you're, that your mandate is to work for the council, but expectations, our expectations, and there's eight of us having expectations of you, and that puts you in a real challenge. And so what I'm, what I'm saying the long way around is, you've done a really good job of trying to meet the expectations of the community and the expectations of the policies we've created, and as much as you can, the expectations of individual counselors as well as the body and the mayor as well. But it puts you in a bind from an accountability standpoint because you don't necessarily have the resources to meet that many expectations, and it creates pressure. And most of the time, whenever I hear people being critical, it's because their expectations were not met. And so what I'm encouraging is, let's be blunt about what expectations can be met and what cannot be met. And if we say we, we want or expect certain things to happen, you need to be able to say, I need the resources to do that, whether it's people, whether it's time, or whether it's shifting the workload. And I know that puts your either-or versus and into conflict, but I can't expect you to always accommodate everything you need to do plus all of our expectations plus everything else and make it always an and. Sometimes it's an either-or, and we need to be able to talk frankly about what that is.
George?
Thank you. Well, I would like to echo a lot of what already has been said, and, you know, once again, John, I think based on your display of leadership and professionalism, I rated you as, as excellent, like I have in the past. You know, part of the reason for that is your ability to take your job of trying to respond to nine different directions, it's kind of like herding cats, take the information, mold it into something, pass that on to your executives and your managers and the staff, and have them come back with something that may not be totally agreed upon, but it's, you know, it's probably, as we often say, the best outcome. You know, some good examples of that is the city hall process, the M U P T process, and most recently, taking what was going to be a train wreck and the wheels coming off, everything falling apart on the Envision Eugene process. Taking that, what you heard from the community, from the staff, from the council, and molding that into something that we are now able to move forward on once, one more time. And then yesterday, when I brought that up in our one-on-one, and I, you know, I wanted to let you know I appreciate the, the effort you put into that, typical John, he, he took that compliment and deflected it to the staff people that did the work. And to me, you know, that, that shows me that you are engaged with the staff, you are engaged with your managers, and you listen to what, what's being said. You're still out there in the community, approachable by any organization or group or, or whatever that, you know, you need to, to talk with. I appreciate your continued efforts in, in to lead the city in its priorities and issues, to include the regional develop, regional economic development strategy, helping the homeless, especially our veterans, transportation and infrastructure needs, and continue to redevelopment of downtown area to include not only the e-web property, but the city hall. I think the most important thing is coming up with the balanced budget this year. I think that was, you know, something that we've all been kind of looking for, not, not necessarily balanced budget, but, you know, one where we're not making any cuts. I think you've set a very high expectation on you and your staff for achieving a sustainable budget, and I think that's your next major accomplishment. And if you continue on the path that you have been, I'm sure we'll be able to, to get closer to that goal, although I don't really know how that's going to come out because of the economic times we're in and also the recent PERS rulings and the unknowns out there. But I'm sure with your leadership and the staff that we have working, that we'll get closer to that than I think we've ever been. So overall, again, I, just repeating what a lot of already have been said, and thanks for the, the hard work that you've, you've done and your leadership.
Thank you.
Colonel?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I use kind of a different scoring system. I assign points for positive attributes or outcomes and negative points for ones that I view as negative. Overall, the rating turned out positive, resulting in a successful rating, whereas a couple of years passed, I rated unsuccessful. One of the positive ones was maintains working relation, good working relationships with department heads and staff. It's really important for the smooth running of bureaucracy to, to have a person that can do that, or as we call it, the organization. A couple of the, I would kind of like to focus on a couple of the negative things, though, because I've been noting this for the past several years. There maybe has been a little slight improvement this last year, but one of the negatives is untimely delivery of information to council and poor scheduling of meetings, often bundling too many important topics in a single work session. Also, sometimes there's very long lapses between work sessions on important issues, and, and we lose focus when that happens. Sometimes questions that councilors submit are not answered, they're not completely answered, or sometimes they're not even answered at all. And these things, they really seriously hamper council's ability for intelligent, timely, and thorough discussions. Another thing I've noticed lately is kind of last-minute loading up of basically peripheral information shortly before work sessions, and if not at the table when we, when we come in, the case in point, that's happened a couple of times on, when we were discussing the M U P T, M U P T revisions, we're just loaded up with, with information that really, at the last minute, really, I didn't think was, was relevant. So I mention this because I'd really like to, I think we need to see some improvement in this area. I realize perhaps the staffing level might be one, one reason, but, you know, we're going to have a lot of important topics to discuss after our break, one of which is going to be the workforce housing component of the M U P T revision. And that's important because that, that has the potential to be $12 million in foregone revenue, so, and it also has the potential to be a really beneficial program. And so we, I feel that we're going to need several uninterrupted focused work sessions on this, and we can come up with a really good product and find the sweet spot where it works for everybody. So, but overall, I gave a successful rating. Thanks.
Betty?
I thought I was at a love fest for a while. I, it's really, I know people keep talking about working for eight bosses. I think there are nine, and I realize that's difficult. I will just say some of the things I said in, on the, in the forum. One thing, acquisition of the head, Amazon Headwaters was wonderful, and I thought you did a fantastic job, a really brilliant job of doing the civic deal, and, and the fact that the triumph turned to tragedy is not your fault, anybody's fault, but it was, it was brilliant. As everyone has said, you, I like that you have good relationships with the executives, and I hope that, I would hope there would be good relationships with the working people I haven't heard a lot of complaints. I think, and several people have said this, but it is, I continue to be grateful that we can talk to the staff, which was not true with some previous managers. We were told, do not talk to them. Talk to me, and I will talk to them. So I think that is really good. They don't always answer right away. I think, negative things, I think there've been too many times when we're asked to decide something really important in a hurry, and we get our packets on Thursday evening, and sometimes being, having lives aside from this, we might be, have company over the weekend or be out of town over the weekend and have very little time before being asked to make a decision on Monday. And I agree with what George said about to having major controversial issues on the same agenda is not too good. It's been, one thing that there, the delay bothers me, the cell tower information. We, I was the one who asked for a work session on cell towers, and we had it, but we didn't, what I, what I asked for was information on what we can do. I already knew what we can't do, and all we got was information on what we can't do. And we were told, I was told that we would be coming back with more information on what can we do, like setbacks or whatever. And since that's such an important topic to many citizens, I think that it should happen Whether it's as serious a matter as they, as some people think it is, I don't know, but they do think it's very serious. Stakeholders, I mentioned this in a meeting recently, this isn't on, I didn't write that, but whenever we're told that stakeholders think this, I would like to know who are the stakeholders? What do we call stakeholders? Are they people who, how many of them are people who tend, have a vested interest who might profit or, or lose because of what we decide? And I gave you a good rating, and I, I used to evaluate teachers all the time, and excellent is really reserved for unusual things, but I, and I don't know whether I want you to retire or not. I don't even know how old you are, but I, I, every- I don't even know how old you are, but I, I, everyone, I think, compared to other city managers, except for one who was fired, I think you're doing a good job.
Thanks, Betty. Thank you, everybody. City managers?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll work on trying to do something unusual this next year. So we'll, we'll see if we can do something about that. Thank you very much for all your confidence and support, and I really do appreciate the comments about the staff. I think all of you do know that we have an extremely talented staff that's very gifted, and they continually respond when I and you ask them to do things, and that's, it's a double-edged sword, as many of you have recognized, because they, they get an amazing amount of things done in the community, but at the same time, particularly through the budget process. The organization is stressed, in some places more than others, but it is a, it does cause that, that stress and tension, and, and that's part of what I think we see, Betty, I think your cell tower example's a good example. It's, the same people are working on multiple kinds of things, and so it's how do you sort that out? And so we triage those kinds of things, and we don't always get it right. And so that's part of what happens on some of those. And it's, it's not an excuse, but it's maybe an explanation on some stuff. But with that said, I do think the stable budget environment provides a different place for us. We're in this transition year, which we can think about something different than filling gaps. We can think about sustainable budgets. We can think about continuing, doing some things in the community, and so I think that's a real positive. I, I have heard and read your concerns and understand those, and will endeavor to try to make some differences for myself and the staff. There are times when information is quick, sometimes it feels too much, I agree, sometimes it, it isn't as relevant as what you're needing, and we'll continue to work on trying to refining how to provide the information that you're really looking for and needing. But it's a great community. It really is. I mean, there's just some really great things going on, and I really appreciate all of your efforts, as does the staff. We also know, for the most part, you're volunteers, and, and the amount of hours that you each put in individually and collectively, I think, in some cases, the community would be pretty amazed and, at the, the amount of time and effort that you put into things. And so we appreciate that as well, and so, thank you very much for the feedback.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I guess we're ready to move on?
Yeah.
I think at this point, if, if there are no other comments, we're through with this work session for this.
We're ready for another year here.
Yeah, yes.
I do have a question. Are we addressing the compensation at this time, or do we have a later time?
Actually, based on, over five years ago, with the structure that was put in place, it's kind of automatic based on the ratings, and so it's included at the very back of your folder on the last page. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you. But I think you, you designed this process so that we wouldn't have to come back again, and that it would be automatic based on the ratings that you gave the city manager.
Thank you. And that was, that was more for the viewing public's benefit.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I like the drama-free compensation discussion. The, the last part of this is, you know, deferred compensation can be adjusted, that it's proportional, is that what that just means?
I'm sorry, which part are you referring to?
Last sentence.
The last sentence of, the last, what are you looking at?
The compensation.
Oh. Deferred Comp to be adjusted as long as performance, yes, and...
But deferred comp is, as a percentage of his salary?
Well, I'm going to let Carrie talk about that because she has the contract right there.
I don't know what adjusted means.
It would be, it would actually be...
She has the mic over in front of her.
Yeah, it's just like the, and, oh, sorry. The deferred compensation would be adjusted as long as the performance has a rated average of 1.6 to 3, which he did, and so July 1, 2015, it would go up 5,000.
Is it proportional to his salary?
No, each year...
No, these are set, set amounts. So each year, starting at 2011, which when this was decided, it would increase, it started at 2,000, and so it went up proportional, so, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is a work session on a report to the city council from the civilian review board and the police auditor.
Thanks for warming up the crowd, John.
Top act to follow. Our, our chair is on vacation, and I was expecting our vice chair to be here for the civilian review board, but he has a very important position in the healthcare industry, and I suspect he's in a very important engagement in the healthcare industry, and so he could not, he's not here, and I would like them to put on their own report, but also, as part of the schedule, we were going to do our annual report as well, so I'll start with that, and if Eric shows up in the meantime, we'll defer some time for that. I wanted to give you a couple brief updates. I know the community's interested in the officer-involved shooting that occurred, and we did get the investigation packet from the INFIT. It did not, in my view, or, and at times, with the chief, is there were some administrative issues that we felt weren't addressed in the report, so there's additional investigation being done, and so I suppose primarily on the delay for that process going to the use of force board, but I thought that there were a number of important questions that affected the agency administratively that were not addressed in that first investigation. So there's a second investigation administratively by EPD, so I wanted to give you an update on that. Second update I wanted to give you is when I did my use-of-force report to council, I had asked for statistics on arrests. What I was provided was statistics on charges, and I did not know that until after the report was issued. There's a difference. And so some of the numbers are different to some degree, but not to a great degree, so I wanted to explain that to you, and I'll send you a copy of the updated reports and show you where the corrections are. So we calculated based on about 13,000 arrests annually, and in fact, what occurred was about 8,300 arrests in 2013. So again, some confusion when I asked for arrests and got charges, but that's been remedied. We're going to show you some slides for the public. One of the things, I think, when we get to it, when I got here, yes...
Councilor Volink has a question.
...by what the difference is and why it's...
Between an arrest and a charge.
An arrest is a person charged, you might be charged with eight different charges.
But not everybody arrested is charged.
These are all the arrestable, where, where an actual arrest occurred.
A person could have five charges.
Right, and so...
So that's on the 14,000 versus eight.
Yeah, yeah, and so, not sure how the difference was confused, but in any case, that's been corrected, and you'll get that report. I wanted to thank, first of all, I appreciate city council and your support and the mayor. I know that when I got here, our office was unpredictable, and I think that we're predictable now. I think that the employees understand what the expectations are, and I think that then that's helpful in terms of going through this process, and I think one of the stats that you'll see in the presentation will show that. I want to thank two people on the review board, George Rhodey and Deborah Vidor, who served us and are no longer on the review board, and of course, I want to thank my staff, Leah Pitcher and Vicki Cox, they do just a tremendous job. We have an awful lot of work to do, and Vicki in particular, doing intakes with, with, with folks, it's just really fantastic. So for 2014, as you saw, we have about a 6.8 increase in complaints. We're trending about the same as we always have. A lot of those complaints have probably, that would have been service complaints or allegations of misconduct, are now inquiries because we can triage complaints a lot more thanks to ICV and body cam. So that aspect of accountability has gone up significantly, but then it's caused us greater work at the intake process. Another graph there showing the different allegations over the course of four years and how the numbers have trended upwards. This is the slide in terms of, the, the one that you see at the top now is internally-generated complaints, and so that's now 16% of our complaints. So what we're seeing essentially is supervisors or self-reporting of officers in, in particular situations. I think one of those reasons is an understanding of what our expectations are, the predictability of our expectations. The other aspect of it was in 2013, Blue Team, which is a software package that now sergeants are required to report specific incidents into Blue Team, uses of force, police pursuits, those kinds of things. Those are why I believe that those are trending upward. Supervisors now must respond to scenes and write reports and intake them into the system, and then we're able to look at those sooner and decide whether or not that should be an allegation. So we have seen a decline in allegations, but we've seen an increase in internally-generated This is indicative of the number of employees and number of complaints that we see. Some might even call it an early intervention system. As you can see, a little less than half employees had no complaints, and, and then in each particular category, as indicated in your reports, our largest number, of course, was one complaint, and we had a few that had numerous complaints. Those typically trend towards the people who have the most contact with the public, so, but again, the department's also aware of it and looking if there's any trends or patterns to that. This one, which is probably not too great to look on, are the different kinds of complaints that we receive and the, and the dispositions of those complaints. So the sustained rate means that the officer violated policy, and so that's the light color. So there was, there's a number of categories there. I'm not quick enough to count all of them, but close to 20, in which we had sustained complaints, one out of seven on use of force. I think our, I don't know if it's on the next slide or not, our total sustained rate is about 20, 27%, which is higher than the industry, but again, it's dependent on how any particular organization looks at cases, but I would still match our number industry-wide with most, any agency out there. A lot of agencies are normally around 5%. I found a couple in California that are around 10%. We had, I'll go to the next slide. I know Counselor Taylor and all of you are interested in how people feel after their complaint's been handled, and in terms of helpfulness of the auditor's office, 89% of those that returned surveys to us are, agree or somewhat agree that we were helpful. One of the numbers I think that went up this year was the supervisor addressed concerns and either, 86% agreed or agreed somewhat, so the supervisors, I think, are, are again, getting a better understanding of the expectations and spending a little bit more time explaining why things happen the way that they happen. And then overall satisfaction with outcome, we had about 66% that agreed or somewhat agreed with the overall satisfaction with the outcome. Some folks just aren't going to be happy about the fact that they're arrested or got a ticket. One of the things that was very important when we got here was high-speed chases or vehicle pursuits, and as you can see, that has trended down significantly. There were five high-speed chases this year, four of which were out of policy. So if you pay attention to things, for example, in Detroit, where there's a high-speed chase in which three children ended up being run over and killed, those are kind of, the kind of activities that we don't want to happen in Eugene, and so they have learned different tactical methods to obtain the same result, which is to catch the person that they're after without having to resort to, to driving at high speeds through our neighborhood. So I'm very proud of that statistic. So the only other aspect I want to talk about, because as you know, it's a 99-page report, it's accessible on our website. If someone would like a hard copy, they're welcome to have that. We talk about every case in our report and give details on every case, which I think is important. EPD's large enough where it's a lot of work, but it's not large enough where it's impossible to do that kind of work, because we want to be as transparent as possible, knowing the restrictions that we're under, under the Oregon's public records law. So I'm, again, very proud of our work, and the issues, of course, as you all know, are deal with right now, and things that are important to us are officers' engagement with people who are suffering from mental illness seems to be more and more like the norm than the exception, and I don't think it's, that's something that they signed up for, and that's a very difficult part of their job. Also, the issue of biasness in policing. We had a meeting last, this past week, in which I demonstrated a prototype of a, of a smartphone application that seems very simple to apply rather than waiting for a software program and plan that would tie together with RMS and everything else that's extremely complicated. I demonstrated to them a prototype program that I think, application that they may consider as a test, so I think that that's, I'm hopeful that that will be adopted and then, and then platforms build on that so that we, they can explain to the public the type of stops and things that they make. So I, any questions?
Questions, Chris?
Thank you. Going back to the slide, I think it was the second or third one that you had up there before that, actually before that, okay. You got 425 total complaints in 2014, and it looks like 47% of those are inquiries. What's the difference between inquiry and a complaint? Does, does an inquiry constitute a complaint in your definition? Well, I mean, what's a typical inquiry?
Yes. Someone may claim that, for example, an officer used profanity during traffic stop, during a traffic stop. So in the past, that would be classified as an allegation of misconduct because the profanity clearly is a policy violation. Now, as an inquiry, because of the availability of ICV, in-car video, and the body cams, we're able to look at that first before we decide that to charge an officer with a major policy violation. So there's far more, I don't know if triage is the right word or not, there's far more review at the front end of a complaint now because of the availability of all the information that we didn't have in the past.
Okay, so my confusion was the word inquiry doesn't mean somebody's inquiring about your process. What you are is you're inquiring about what somebody said.
Right, right, I'm trying, it's my inquiry, it, into, if I need to move it to a different category, I'm inquiring, I don't know if inquiries, I, I need more information before I make a final decision about how to classify.
Okay, now I understand. Yeah, when, when I was on the Ethics Commission, we would have a stage called preliminary investigation, where somebody would come in and make a complaint, and we didn't launch a formal investigation until we did the preliminary one to determine there was enough there to launch. That's what you're saying an inquiry is.
Yeah.
You're doing your preliminary investigation to determine... You're doing your preliminary investigation to determine if there's enough there to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that's why it's part of the 425.
It's a pre-investigation. Next year, we'll put that in a little parentheses because we're restricted by the language that we can use formally, but better explanation.
Okay, cool.
It's a pre-investigation.
That was my confusion, so you cleared it all up for me. Thank you very much. I'm impressed with the work that you do. Ideally, what I'd like to get to a place is where you come to us and say, we had five complaints last year, and not worry that you're going to lose your job. Because I think it is your job to get us down to only five complaints, and then you can work on other very important things. So it's not the number of complaints that keeps your job, it's actually the few complaints that makes your job work really well. So thank you very much for the work you do.
And we have a tremendous amount of civic engagement in Eugene, as much as anywhere I've ever experienced in the nation. In 30 years in this business, sometimes the complaints we get still surprise me. But in Eugene, there should be no surprises because anything can be a surprise.
Thank you.
Maybe someday we'll get our complaints down to five. I'm George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I remember, you know, when we were doing your evaluation, you had mentioned that more and more often you are experiencing complaints from people with severe mental health problems. And we've seen, you know, we're reading in the newspaper about people with mental health problems being, you know, subject to force, use of force by police. Some of the information that we've read recently, incidents of people having mental health breakdowns, being, you know, tased, being thrown down. And I became aware recently that I had assumed that cahoots, you know, we have two cahoots vans. I raised the funding a couple of years for a second van. I just assumed that cahoots was available 24/7. It's not. There's big gaps there. And you mentioned at the beginning of this segment of the meeting that, you know, the police really aren't, they're not Junior Freud's, Junior Young's, Junior Carl Menegars. You know, they're police officers, so they're showing up in a dynamic situation where the person with mental health problems, and they don't always respond appropriately. And I'm not blame, trying to lay a blame on them, but so what do you, I mean, what do you think about it? If council at the Budget Committee gives their money in the police budget itself to help contribute? But I just like your view of what do you, I mean, it could only be beneficial to have cahoots available 24/7. I can't think of any negatives there. Do you have any thoughts about that?
I know that if I walk out of here and fall down these steps and break my legs, there's an ambulance there in five minutes to take me to the hospital. I also know that if I go into a mental health crisis at 4:00 a.m., the response is probably going to be police unless I'm physically attacking someone. It's likely to be a priority three, so it's gonna, might be a while before they get there. And if there's family members present, then they're left on their own. So it's confusing to me why there's not more investment in treatment for mental illness. And it seems to fall more and more on police to be the primary response for that. And at times, it doesn't go well. And I think that at least a year and a half ago, when I was meeting with some folks from Portland, it was their number-one legislative priority to get more funds for mental health. And it's just more of a problem. I don't get as many complaints so much as I generate complaints because I appreciate that some folks in mental health crisis don't understand the intricacies of my office, let alone the general public at times. So I think it's a very serious situation, and I don't think we're at the solution level yet.
No, we don't seem to be. There seems to be an enormous gap. So I think that, I'm just wondering if there's money in the police budget to at least pay for part of this. And I think it should be a priority at our next budget cycle. And I don't know if we can figure out what to do, or at least maybe we can have some idea what some possibilities are before that happens. But yeah, it's a tremendous gap, and we need to do something about it.
Claire? Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for this great report. I have a question and then some comments. So a community member asked me to ask you about the issue of recording the C R B meetings. And it's too bad that your vice chair couldn't be here because I'm sure he'd have some perspective on that. And I know at one time in the past, they were recorded, but I believe, I don't know if it was due to budget cuts or other considerations, you're no longer recording them. And this was raised in the context of it's a public meeting, and we should be able to access that tape easily. And so I just wanted to ask you about that and what your thoughts were on the recording of the C R B meetings.
The, at times, it's a meeting, and at times, it's an administrative tribunal. And with the Oregon Public Records laws, basically, you know, name and place and things, anything that identifies a particular officer or discipline is not public information. And so at times, names have slipped, or dates or times have slipped. Anyone in the public can come to the meeting with their own recording device and record it. And we've had those at our particular meetings. To have an official recording of an administrative tribunal under those circumstances is not yet the sense of the review board. I floated the idea of, okay, everything but the administrative discussion perhaps being recorded. It would cost more for the recorder portion of it, but we can absorb that. So that's a thought. And at any point in time, if a majority of the board wants the entire session recorded, that would be certainly their choice. So, but at this point in time, they're not recorded, tape-recorded by us at that point in time. Minutes typically are more about decisions and who's present and things like that at meetings, not necessarily a documentary of the entire meeting. So, but at any stage in time, we can certainly do that if that's the sense of the majority of the review board. And again, perhaps a portion of it, where we talk about policies or other issues can be recorded, but not the, I would not recommend that the administrative portion do that because they like the entire reports without redactions. And at times, as they're reviewing the report, they, as is human nature, it's tough to be perfect, a name might come out or something like that, and I wouldn't want them to be liable for that under those circumstances.
Yeah, great. I appreciate your explanation. I think it's important for the public to recognize that we do have a public process, but there are some limitations on what we can officially share in terms of personnel information. And so, as you point out, an individual citizen can come and record if they like and post it online if they like. But you and your capacity as the police auditor need to be very mindful that you're complying with public records law and personnel law and the other statutes that govern your work. So, you know, I just want to point out, I think this annual report is very impressive. It's a wealth of data presented in different formats, provides, I think, a real picture of the work of your office, as well as responses to the surveys that you mentioned of folks who've interacted with your office, and the detailed summaries of cases that have been reviewed by the C R B, I believe. And I want to draw attention to this report because I've had at least one active citizen question what kind of accountability and obligation to report on your work you have to this body and to the public. And so here's the report with the data and a lot of detail that really shows what you've been doing. And I also just want to say, in my role on council and police commission, I've seen the results of your work to improve delivery of police services to our community and to continue the hard work of building trust between the community and the police. I know that you are continually looking for ways to improve both your office's work and the policies and practices of our police department. And even with the good process you've created for this office, you aren't content to coast, but you continue to seek ways to serve our community with your, with your interest in working on the issue of mental health crisis response being the latest. So I just wanted to appreciate that.
And of course, the bias thing. And Leah and Vicky did 99% of this report. I have a few paragraphs of editorial comments there. And certainly, and Leah built this template about three or four years ago, and so, and Vicky keeps updating the cases as they come in and things like that. So they just have done great work on it. And I want to, I'm just really blessed to have them as staff.
And then just to reiterate, you said if folks in the public want to see this report, they can get a hard copy from your office?
Yes, a hard copy and the C R B report. Again, I want them to present their report, and we'll do it at another time. And we have a great review board. They do their homework. They don't, there's no one on that board that has an agenda, unlike probably most cities in the nation where the review boards are picked by specific interest groups. I mean, we really have a review board that is open-minded and thoughtful and does their homework before they come to the meeting.
Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, ladies, thank you for the report. Excellent work, as always. Could you bring up the slide that shows the type of complaints? The long, there we go, that's, one of the things that Claire and I get to do working on the Police Commission is see a little bit more about how, as she has just mentioned, and I echo her comments, how your office's work, the work of all of you, make the police departments work better, makes the police department work better in our community and with our community. So I appreciate that very much. One of the things that we also get to do is help draft policies or new policies that deal with emerging issues. Now, one of those we've been working with lately is the idea of citizens recording of police officers while they're doing their work. And so my question to you is, under which category would, if a citizen said, I was recording the police doing their thing, and the police officer didn't respond to my doing so in a way that I was happy with, right? How would you characterize that complaint? And does that occur? Have you experienced that?
It does occur. Typically, that would be under the category of unsatisfactory performance, 1101, as you know, which is sort of a kind of a code of conduct section of the Policy and Procedures Manual, which my opinion is should be a separate thing other than in the phone book thing. But that would be that, we encounter fewer and fewer. I think most officers understand now that no matter what, where they are, if there's five people watching, there's five people recording. If there's 10 people watching, there's 10 people recording. At times, they will charge someone who they believe is getting too close and won't obey commands to get back. That seems to be diminishing, but if there's no force, you sometimes I don't really know about it. I know that, or I believe, I haven't seen the numbers, one of the top five categories of arrests is interfering with police officers. And I have a concern about that because that kind of tells me that there's an opportunity for improvements in the engagements that occur, but it's pretty rare on a cell phone type of issue. But I think that that's one of the things that maybe even the Police Commission.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm wondering about, is that whole issue of bucking authority is a thing in our community when an officer, you know, uses enforcement authorities, say, I need you to do X. How that works together, to some degree, is a reflection of the kind of policies we ask our officers to put into play in their daily world. So I appreciate you guys' work to say, here are some ideas for policy tweaks that can make that better.
Yeah.
Like I said, the one we're working on right now, I hope we got it right. And so I, that's why I'm kind of trying to dig a little further to see what you think about how the community interacts with that.
I think it's more of the behavior of the, when they start to get jittery and jumpy and things like that and distracting the officers, I think then that's when they're more likely to pay attention. Do we have something on that?
Wanted to note, so those are the specific policy violations that have been alleged. So next year, when that policy has been enacted, it will be up there.
On there, on the spectrum. Okay, all right, great.
But right now, it's under unsatisfactory performance.
Got it, okay. Thanks very much.
Alan?
Yeah, Mark, great job as usual. We already went through your evaluation. I think Mike said it right. The police auditor's office makes E P D better. And I think it's an excellent report. It's so chock-full of relevant detail and hats off to Vicky and Leah. This is a really good format. It's got everything you need to, and the detail that you'd need to in order to understand what's going on. As regard to the mental health issue, I'm appalled by the state of our mental health system that we have in this, in the level services so far below what's required. And we keep seeing this over and over again, where these people fall through the cracks and do awful things. And police didn't sign up for that. It's not, they're not, they're not psychologists, and they're, it's not their fault they're having to deal with this on a regular basis. And it seems to me it just keeps increasing. I don't know if that's really true, but sure seems like it. And it's really a societal problem. We have to deal with this fact that we don't do anything, we don't have a mental health system, and we need to fund it appropriately, we need to put in institutions that need to be able to deal with this stuff. And it seems, though, the way things are, as usual, it's falling back down on the local governments to be able to deal with this stuff because there's so little action at the federal level and at the state level. And so if we were going to do something in the mental health arena that would be most helpful, what would be your advice about where we should start thinking or directing us towards looking at that with?
As I.
The E P D's response to this stuff?
Ideally, as I send shutters through the budget people.
Sorry.
I think that ideally, and let me say, it's just not Oregon or Eugene, three days into the job in Cincinnati in 1986, they shot and killed a man who was suffering mental illness, and he was waving a right knife around in the kitchen of a group home full of other people who were in the group home. Three days into my job in 1986. And then we had another one, and they started creating these crisis intervention teams and things like that. And so it does happen nationwide. But is it unreasonable to have four or five cahoots-type vans? Is it unreasonable to have four or five service-type vans? People see uniforms, they see officers ordering them to do things, and you're already in mental health crisis, and now there's somebody who's aggressing towards you, and you're supposed to hear the words and not see the actions? It's all very difficult. I think we're going to have a veterans' hospital here. I don't understand nationwide why we don't have crisis intervention teams in our veterans' hospitals, as we have more and more people coming back from a very long conflict in the Middle East. Again, that's ideal situations. We have a state with just a few million people. I came from a state that had a lot of people and invested a lot of money because we had a lot of people in mental health services and still had incidents. But it just seems like it's trending upward in terms of incidents. So, yeah, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable to have four or five cahoots vans. I know Portland was ordered just to have one. I also think that there ought to be a couple specialized people at the dispatch center that can, once a 911 operator realizes that this is one of those situations that we have specially trained people who we're going to have to pay more to help get through these problems, and that there should be more staff within the police department who are social workers and mental health workers to go to these types of situations. At the end of the day, the cost upfront is probably going to be more, but the cost at the back end, I think, is going to be less. And it's. And it's, it's just really, I think Leah, she went on a ride along with a sergeant one Sunday, and six of six calls were mental health calls that she went on during that ride-along period. And so, you know, that's an ideal situation, but it's not cost-free. But are we, are we given 100% to go out there and find the dollars to try to do it? I don't think anyone can sit there and say that we have expended 100% of our effort to find a better solution for these mental health issues.
Correct. Finish, Alan?
Yes, thank you.
So just following up on that, it seems to me that we keep talking about this. And my only thought here is that before we get to the budget session time, we should have a policy discussion about this. So the policies discussion guides the budget discussion.
What an idea.
And so somebody here needs to ask for a work session to have this discussion so that we can at least see if we can take some steps forward in some direction. That would be my thought.
And I think right now, it has to be coordinated with the state and with the county. I know that at least last session, they were going to dedicate some of the marijuana tax money towards mental health. And again, I can guarantee you that there's a city to the north that's going to fight like heck for those dollars. And I think that we need to put our dog in that fight, too.
And I'd also add that as you think about the legislature, we ought to be thinking about what we, the message we send, because actually, there's been a fair amount of money being aimed at mental health issues. We just haven't been at the, some of us have been at the table and others of us have not been. So it's, yes, Mike?
And I would say, too, this is another opportunity for us to partner well with the folks whose building we're sitting in.
That's right.
As it's traditionally a county jurisdictional issue. But their obvious, you know, the cleaver that was taken to their budgets have left us without that capacity. So I wonder if we were to do more, how might we do so best in conjunction with both the county and the state?
Exactly. And the state, really.
Because they're their extension.
And we're about per capita spending, the state is about in the middle, but a per capita spending in New York State is different than per capita spending in Oregon State. So.
One other comment is, I think this public meetings thing is important, and I think protection of information. So I think both of those are important, but I personally feel that the CRB should be as publicly responsible in terms of making information available as they can be within the constraints you have. So whatever that balance is, I think they should aim at the, at the best that you can do under those circumstances. George?
Well, yeah, I was thinking about that, too, in the last few minutes. It seems like, I mean, ideally, it would be, the CRB meetings would be televised, except for the administrative adjudications.
Yeah, administrative.
That should be kept separate, kind of like when we do, you know, an executive session. That's not broadcast. And for the very, you know, important reasons you mentioned, maybe that could work like our council meetings, but the meeting itself would be fine, except for that one portion. And we would just need to know, well, how much would that cost to televise those? I mean, you know, we televise budget committee meetings, we tell that all of the planning commission meetings are televised, other meetings are televised, all the county meetings. So maybe that's a question we can ask and see how much that would cost.
Great idea.
So thank you very much, Mark, for your report. We appreciate it. Everybody appreciates it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
All right. That'll be it for today. Thanks.